She did.
Guys, ready? The Monday, August 19th, 2024 City Council meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, you've had an opportunity to review the council study session minutes of July 15th, along with the council meeting minutes of July 15th, and the council special meeting minutes of August 5th. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. And that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards, and we have some introductions. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three introductions this evening, as well as some two oath of office. The first, I'd like to introduce you to our new human resource manager, Leanne Hanth. We are very excited to welcome Leanne, who's our new HR manager, to the city of Vandelia. She has six years of HR experience and is dedicated to supporting the employees, passionate about all things HR. She's thrilled to be joining us and looks forward to helping the city grow and succeed. We are confident that her expertise and enthusiasm will make a positive impact on our team. And I'm here to tell you, in just a few short weeks, she has made a very positive impact on our team. So welcome, Leanne, to the city's team.
All right, welcome. Thank you.
As I mentioned, tonight, we'll also introduce two members of our Fire Division who are taking the oath of office this evening. The first is Derek Cobb. Derek started with the Division of Fire as a part-time firefighter EMT and started his full-time employment as a firefighter paramedic in 2018. In 2023, Derek was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. He is a graduate of Greenville Senior High School. In his time employed with the city, Derek obtained his degree in EMS Fire Science from Sinclair Community College and continues today working towards his bachelor's in fire engineering at the University of Cincinnati. Derek also holds many years of professional certificates and training that makes him a valuable asset to the Division of Fire. Derek has been the recipient of multiple awards over the years within the division, the most notable being awarded firefighter of the year in 2018, EMS Person of the Year in 2019, and for good measure, again, in 2021. Derek was also named the 2023 Officer of the Year. Derek delivers top-level service and will continue to be an asset as he moves to his new role of captain within the Division of Fire. I'll now introduce Chris Willoughby. Chris originally started with the division as a part-time employee and came back as a full-time firefighter paramedic in March of 2020. He is a graduate of Wayne High School and Huber Heights, and since being with the Division of Fire, has continually furthered his education and knowledge by attending classes and obtaining several certificates applicable to his job and new position. Additionally, Chris has been recognized multiple times over the year, multiple times over the years, at the Division of Fire's annual awards, but most recently, Chris was awarded the Division of Fire Firefighter of the Year Award. He delivers top-tier service and will continue to be an asset as he moves to his role as lieutenant within the Division of Fire. With that, Your Honor, I'll move down, and we'll do the oath of office.
Mark.
I was told not to forget that.
I was just thinking that's interesting.
All right, here's the tough part again. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
and will obey the laws of the United States
and will obey the laws of the United States
and of the state of Ohio
and of the state of Ohio
that I will, in all respects
that I will, in all respects
observe the provisions of the Charter
observe the provisions of the Charter
and ordinances of the city of Vandelia
and the ordinances of the city of Vandelia
and will faithfully discharge
will faithfully discharge
the duties of the Office of Fire Captain
the duties of the Office of Fire Captain
within the Division of Fire
within the Division of Fire
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You trust him? You trust him?
Yeah, I trust him. Should probably stab me.
Probably. He's got a big smile on his face. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Christopher Willoughby.
solemnly swear or affirm
solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
and will obey the laws of the United States
and will obey the laws of the United States
and of the state of Ohio
and of the state of Ohio
that I will, in all respects
that I will, in all respects
observe the provisions of the Charter
observe the provisions of the Charter
and ordinances of the city of Vandelia
and ordinances of the city of Vandelia
and will faithfully discharge
and will faithfully discharge
the duties of the Office of Fire Lieutenant
the duties of the Office of Fire Lieutenant
within the Division of Fire
within the Division of Fire
Congratulations.
All right, we have some real exciting city business to attend to after the introductions here. So if you were here just for the introductions and everything and would like to take this chance to exit early, now would be a good time. Otherwise, you can hang around and learn about the city of Vandelia and everything our city council does. All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if someone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Good evening, Mayor Herbst, esteemed council members, and city manager Sweeterman. My name's Rob O'Leary. I'm the superintendent of Vandelia Butler City Schools, 500 South Dixie Drive, Vandelia, Ohio. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of myself and the Vandelia Butler City Schools Board of Education to encourage and support you to prohibit adult-use cannabis operators in the city of Vandelia. You all should have received a letter from the board and me encouraging you to take this action with reasons for our support, as well as an article I wrote for the Dayton Daily News in December of 2023. I come tonight speaking for the future of the city, the school district, and for families. Proudly serving this community as superintendent for eight years now, I can tell you marijuana-related incidents have increased a lot, especially over the last three years, in adolescents in the district. It's already far too easy for them to acquire marijuana. For this reason, I have serious concerns, and that is why I'm here to speak tonight. Allowing these types of businesses in the community will only make that worse. Marijuana is a drug. It causes chemical changes in the brain for heavy users of the drug. Medical science is clear about the effects of marijuana, especially the effects of use on adolescents. The risks can affect normal brain development, and excessive and frequent use is associated with hallucinations, paranoia, and a range of emotional problems and mental health issues like depression and social anxiety. Frequent users are more likely to develop long-lasting mental disorders, especially for those who start using marijuana at an earlier age. This is indisputable. Allowing these operations in the city will only increase the usage and consequently increase the problems I just mentioned. At a practical level, I can tell you, in disciplined situations and hearings that I come across with students where marijuana is involved, with accuracy, I can pinpoint where a student began using the drug just by looking at their student records, because grades, attendance, behaviors, interests in things that they were once interested in all decreased because of the drug. Unfortunately, with passage of this issue, the state is going to see an increase in use and addiction among adults, and this will undoubtedly trickle down to adolescents. If this happens, there will be more problems in the household, which will lead to problems in the community and the schools. As a family goes, so go we all. I know there are people out there saying that the voters or the citizens approve this. It's the will of the people. It's well-known that the support for this initiative came from interest groups and businesses from outside of the state who threw millions of dollars into the campaign. But what was approved by voters is not a constitutional change, which means each jurisdiction has a duty, a duty, to decide if it is going to allow these types of businesses in their communities or permanently ban them. Just like it's legal to operate strip clubs in the state of Ohio, wisely, the city of Vandelia has decided to keep these types of businesses out of the community. Just the same, we are encouraging you to permanently ban these marijuana businesses in the community, for the sake of children, for the sake of families, for the sake of businesses, for the sake of the community, for the sake of us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Barbara Spurgeon, 777 North Edge Drive. Thank you for everything you do for our city. A special thanks for resurfacing Stone Quarry. They did a great job, and it's so much easier to drive on now. And just a friendly reminder to you guys during meetings, when you're speaking, if you could get a little closer to the microphone, it would really help. I have trouble hearing you sometimes. And I have talked to others that have also expressed, you know, the same thing, and so therefore they don't want to come to the meetings. So, anyway, so just passing that along. It's always good to share information. I have been a home care coordinator for the last 20 years, my retirement job. I was an advocate for my mother and caring for her until she passed away a few years ago. And then again, for my husband, who passed away three years ago. My job put me in a position to know what to do for both of them and how to speak for them, and I was able to push for the quality of care that I wanted for them. At last month's council meeting, if you recall, that woman that came up and was very, you know, she felt very strong about her concern about a resident that was always calling, you know, the apartment where they lived. She was always outside, calling, wanted to call the squad, wanted to call the police, or the fire department almost every day. Something was always wrong, or she had a crisis, some kind of pain, and then they would take her to the hospital and then ultimately bring her back home. So, and this resident that spoke, she was thinking that our services would be better used for true emergencies for others. After she came and sat down, I ended up giving her a couple of phone numbers that could possibly help, Adult Protective Services and the Dayton Ambudsman. I felt the woman could have had some, that she was talking about, could have had some memory issues or possible dementia. So tonight, I have put together, I've got a folder for each of you. I'll go ahead and bring that up if I can. So there is information in the folder. There's a pamphlet about the Alzheimer's Association, which provides many services to families and individuals dealing with dementia. I have also included some information about the company I work for, Dynamic Senior Solutions. We see a lot of people with dementia and help families through their journey. There is also a copy of an article that the Dayton Daily News wrote about us a few years ago about caring for those with dementia. And there's a sheet that gives the general strategies for the care partner and lists the six Rs: reassure, redirect, respond, restructure, rethink, and respite. I also prepared a list of possible resources and the phone numbers: Adult Protective Service, Vandelia Police Department, Dayton Ambudsman, Area Agency on Aging, and Care Patrol. I thought it would be helpful to share this with all of you. And just as a side note, at Dynamic Senior Solutions, we also do dementia training for individuals and for groups of people. As far as training for our police and first responders, is the subject of memory issues and dementia covered in their training? I'm not sure about that. I know some cities are dementia-friendly, Yellow Springs in particular. The city employees and area business owners have had dementia training. I know there are some cities that have a social worker. The city of Kettering has a social worker. Our geriatric population is at a higher risk and can sometimes be misunderstood because of their memory issues, because they have different behaviors. It is very sad to see this happen, but there are things we can do to help. I just wanted to, these are some of my thoughts, I just wanted to pass this along, share with you this evening, and I thank you all for your time and your attention.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Hi, I'm Patty Tackett, the owner of Miami Valley Shooting Grounds at 771 Johnson Station Road. First of all, I'd like to commend her for taking the time and the passion that she just showed in caring for people. One of the biggest things that we, and struggles that we had, retired Dayton police officer, was the fact that we did not have so much of those information for a lot of these resources that could be used, and more people need to have those resources. So for the fact that she took the time to do that, fill out a notebook for you guys, she needs to be applauded for that. So on to why I'm here for that. So what I'm, I have called the zoning department in regards to opening, reopening up my outside shooting range, and I was advised to come here to see what steps I needed to do in order to make that happen. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay, we can have our city manager look into where that's at, unless Mr. McDonald has an update?
Well, I can, I'm sure Mr. Sweeterman's not familiar with the history, but we did pass several years back a ban on outdoor shooting due to the noise issues and things like that. So any reversal of, if that's what you're talking, outdoor shooting?
Correct.
Yeah, that would have to be redone through a zoning change, because it's not a prohibited, it is a prohibited use now, if I am correct.
Okay.
There was an original law changed in 2017, and then it followed up. There were some corrections made to that law in 2020 that added some stipulations and stuff. My concern, and just so that you know, in talking with zoning and stuff, some of the definition of a shooting range, and one of the things was prohibiting or allowing police jurisdictions and government agencies to allow an outside shooting range. One of the things that's important to note is the fact that I am in Ohio Police Officers Training Academy, and I do certify police officers, resource officers, hospital personnel, security. I certify all those through the Police Officers Training Academy. So I could and would fall into a police agency due to the fact that I do train. So I wanted to make you aware of that, too. That was added to the code or to the law in 2020.
Okay. Thank you.
So I should suspect somebody will contact me or look into it and follow up with me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Okay, I believe we can do that in the next, at the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
When that subject comes up.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the city manager's report, where we have some information items and an action item. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, just want to mention that our offices will be closed on September the 2nd for Labor Day. The recreation center will be open from 7:00 a.m. to noon for the fitness area, gymnasium, and track only. And those are, the last item I have for you on the information items is that our council meeting, the first council meeting in September, will signify the end of the summer session season, and we will go back to two meetings a month. However, our first meeting will be on Tuesday, September the 3rd, due to the holiday, at 7:00 p.m. And right now, the study session is tentatively scheduled for 6:00 p.m.
Turn my mic on. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 24-R-48. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
Your Honor, there's an action item that you skipped over.
What'd I miss?
The action item.
Oh, the action item. Getting ahead of myself.
Thank you. We'll move right on to the action items. Our action item this evening is for the consideration of the appointment of John Wheeler, an applicant requesting appointment to the Housing Code Board of Appeals as an alternate. A memo from interim clerk of Council Schwartz saying his application were included in your packet. So the action item tonight is consideration of John Wheeler for appointment as an alternate to the Housing Code Board of Appeals.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Mr. John Wheeler as an alternate to the Housing Code Board of Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Vice Mayor Blakesley to approve John Wheeler to the Board of Housing Code Board of Appeals.
Here we go. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. And as stated, we have no old business, and now it brings us to our first resolution of the evening, which is Resolution 24-R-48. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of Highway Rock Salt from Cargill, Inc., Salt Road Safety, at a price of $64.66 per ton for the winter of 2024 through the spring of 2026, for an amount up to 2,000 tons each winter.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids were open for the Highway Rock Salt purchase on June 21st by the city of Dayton as the coordinator for the Southwest Ohio Purchasers for Government program. The city of Vandelia has been participating in this cooperative bidding process for many years, and with a total of 92 entities participating this year. Director Burton recommends that our bid be awarded to Cargill at the bid price of $64.66 per ton for the two-year period, winter of 2024 through spring of 2026. The estimated amount of purchase will be 2,000 tons per year, as Cargill is the lowest, and Cargill is the lowest and best bidder. I will note that we are not required to purchase a minimum amount, but only purchase the amount needed to maintain our straight throughout the winter.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 24-R-48 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Resolution 24-R as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. We have one ordinance in its first reading, that being Ordinance 24-18. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending the text of the Vandelia Zoning Code regarding the cultivation, processing, sale, and distribution of adult-use marijuana.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. In November of 2023, Ohio voters approved a ballot initiative legalizing marijuana for adult use. Council subsequently passed a moratorium to allow time to study the matter and to determine the framework under which sales would be permitted by the state of Ohio. During July 15th, 2024, city council study session, after a briefing on the new law, council directed staff to prepare an amendment to the zoning code that would add adult-use marijuana to the current prohibition on medical marijuana. On August 13th, the Planning Commission voted 4-0 to recommend approval of the proposed amendments.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 24-18 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve Ordinance 24-18 in its first reading. Are there any comments?
Yes, I prepared a statement, basically, since there's been some controversy and emails that we've received, I like to speak to those. And the following are my comments and statement on the subject of the sale of marijuana in Vandelia. First, I appreciate Councilmember Avalotus Weaver for encouraging and requesting the Vandelia citizens reach out to council members to communicate and voice their opinions and concerns on the legal sale of marijuana to 21-year-olds of age and older in the city of Vandelia. This helped me with my decision. A number of citizens have reached out to me as a result of this request. Most of us have received some of the emails, so we all have seen those. Here's the data from the emails and phone calls I've received. There are more against the sale of marijuana in Vandelia than there was for the sale. That's just my survey. For the emails, I found 12 against the sales, and of those 12, five are civic leaders. One citizen specified they were against the sale but not the use. Of those others, civic leaders, it broke down to two theologians, the police chief, school leadership, and local prominent business owner, as we've seen. I found three for the sale, and one being for medicinal purposes only. I received five phone calls, three were against, and two were for the sale. That makes total sampling of 15 respondents against the sale and five for the sale in Vandelia. Although my small survey may represent a majority of those who voted for the statewide initiative, which includes Vandelia, it does show me a concern of the majority that actually contacted me. They have a big concern. Yes, it is true, Issue 2 was voted on by the citizens of Ohio and passed in November 2023 by a majority of 500,000 voters. Vandelia followed a similar trend. However, the majority was slightly tighter than that, with Vandelia voters only narrowly passing it by the margin of over 106 votes. The ballot initiative, Issue 2, was also otherwise known as to commercialize, regulate, legalize, tax the adult use of cannabis to enact Chapter 3780 of the Higher Rights Code, which is principally the personal legalization, use, commercial sale, and cultivation of marijuana in the state of Ohio. Additionally, the enacted law provides for strict regulations and control in which those wishing to dispense cannabis shall apply for licensing to sell and cultivate marijuana. The state of Ohio just recently approved 98 dispensaries as of August 1st. The question some asked through emails, and I quote, "Why was..." "Why was this on the ballot if indeed council thinks that we have the right to veto the voting results?" The answer, by the same law of Higher Vice Code 3780, yes, we, the council, do have the right to prohibit the sale and cultivation of marijuana, which I will explain further momentarily. This person goes on to say, "So if indeed there are people stating that they don't want the business in town, did they vote against it?" And further states, "I'm pretty sure in America, the majority rules unless you are taking that right away as well." To answer that question, yes, the majority does still rule, as far as I know. That right has not been taken away. I just want to be clear about that. We have not taken anybody's right or freedoms away. Majority ruled then and still does now. For the health and safety of our community, we, at least I am, are merely exercising our rights allowed by the very same law that permits the recreational use and sales to prohibit the sale and cultivation. The law does provide to communities to opt out under Ohio Vice Code 3780-25. That was also voted on by the majority when this law passed in November. This provision was on the original text of the ballot initiative and published in front of the voters when they made their choice at the ballot machine and write-in. I have the full text of that right here, what was on the ballot machine. Let me please read that section, which is... And it's pretty small print, so I can imagine trying to read this while you're trying to vote for it. "Legislative authority of a municipal corporation may adopt an ordinance, or a board of township trustees may adopt a resolution by a majority vote to prohibit or limit the number of adult-use cannabis operators permitted under the chapter within the municipal corporation or within the unincorporated territory of the township respectively." So it was up to the voters, so you can see by the voters, not only voted for the sale and use, they also voted to give the city right to prohibit the sales. And as you can see, this is what was actually on the ballot, and you see where it said for or yes or no. And then, sorry about that, the second page, if you scroll, it showed then some of the items on that ballot, what would happen. If you kept scrolling, which I'm sure is part of the issue, that there's 12 more pages, and the law was actually on that, on the ballot, so... I know even sometimes when I've seen that, you know what you're looking or what you're going up against, and so you already hopefully have made up your mind as to what you're going to do and not have to stand there and read all that. It was up to the voters to educate themselves as to what the ballot said in its entirety before voting. Unfortunately, I suspect the voters did not scroll through to read the fine print on the ballot, which is found on page 7. After, the day after Issue 2 passed, Tom Heron, spokesperson for the Coalition to Regulate Marijuana Like Alcohol campaign, said during an interview, "Ohioans have seen similar legalization laws adopted in neighboring states, and they know that regulating the cannabis market is preferred, preferable, to the failed policy of prohibition. It's imperative that the elected officials respect the voter's decision and implement this measure in a manner that is consistent with the sentiments of the majority of the electorate. I do respect the voter's decision to use and legally buy marijuana and other cannabis products. I respect their right to personally grow and limit the amount or limited by the law. Conversely, though, these who voted for the Issue 2 also have to understand when they voted to pass the law, they likewise equally gave communities the right to opt out of the sale of marijuana in the jurisdictions, as I mentioned earlier. Henceforth, by the same law, I similarly respect the right to exercise our assertion in Section 3780-25 to only prohibit the sale and cultivation of marijuana within Vandelia and not the personal use part or portion. Of course, personal use additionally brings on an entirely different set of concerns, which has already been voiced by others, our police chief and Mr. O'Leary. It is also said that the law states that percentage of the taxes collected from the sale of cannabis goes toward the Substance Abuse and Misuse Fund. This is similar to gaming industry and alcohol abuse or sales. Most people knew what they were voting for. Most were interested in legalization for recreational use and growing their own without being thrown into jail. Others saw it as convenience similar to buying groceries. There are plenty of sites throughout the Ohio and that we recently, that were recently licensed to sell marijuana as of the first of the year, and more to come in the coming years, or at least in the next two years. If residents in Vandelia wish to purchase cannabis products, they need to look no further than a mile outside the city limits. In fact, there is a dispensary not too far from the city limits in other jurisdictions in the south. It's located 1875 Nemo Road, Dayton, Pure Ohio Wellness. As Councilmember Avalotus Weaver had pointed out in an email, the facility was open the first week of August. This is actually closer than making a trip to Myers-Orangelwood or to Huber Heights. This also means that the lady that spoke to us back in June and others like her can buy the medicinal cannabis without traveling two hours north. I'm happy for them that she no longer has to travel that distance to purchase the medical marijuana or any marijuana that helps her chronic incurable pain. It does disappoint me that the dispensary is just that close to the city limits. However, that's that jurisdiction's decision, not ours. As you've already heard, the Planning Commission voted 4-0 to approve the text amendments to our zoning code, or the prohibited uses referring to commercial sales and the cultivation of marijuana. The state law already limits the Ohio, for the Ohio, it limits the amount for Ohioans on the personal side. Furthermore, as a health and safety issue that seeks to protect those others enjoying and using city facilities, I would like to see and recommend that we update our facilities policies to reflect the new law in regards to how the personal use may affect patron use of the facility. This would include such areas as parks with perhaps large events that serve alcohol. And I understand that if that's the case, then because of licensing, that would not be permitted. And then any public buildings within the city, which would be already, I believe, similar to the smoking ban that's in place. This is similar to policy restrictions already in place concerning such things as gun laws, alcohol use, smoking, and other similar limitations currently in place at our facilities. Yield my time back to the mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
I do.
Ms. Weaver?
Barb, can you hear me? Okay. First of all, I want to thank Superintendent Rob O'Leary and Chief Oathouse for your thoughts. So when I started this journey of understanding what this would mean for our community, I did not know much about the repercussions or what it would mean or what our citizens wanted, because I was not here when we outlawed the medical use. So I started to just talk to citizens. I did ask for them to email us as a whole. And already, Councilman Blakeslee told you all about the poll on that. I went out to social media and asked for some questions to be answered and just watched also. And that's how I got them to respond to that answer, and then I listened. And I found some really interesting information. I found out that there's a group of moms that meet regularly in the community to just smoke marijuana together. I found over 20, I talked to actually 25 people. Most of them used it, they said, for some type of relief. The reason that they asked to, for us to approve it is they said, one, it would be local for them to find a safe place to purchase that would not be laced with any type of other drug. They wouldn't have to go to a source that would be unsafe for them, that they would have to go to a drug dealer, that they didn't know where they were going. I also went and visited Pure Ohio and talked to the people in line due to people saying the increased crime. They have never once, in the entire time that they've been open, which has actually been several years, had one call that they've had to make. The only time they've had the police come there was when a drunk driver pulled into their driveway and hit someone. In fact, it said, I also went to several medical journals, and it said that, stressifying the level of self-reported and measured cannabis use and higher levels were not associated with higher odds of medical vehicle, medical, motor vehicle crashes with or without co-use of alcohol. They wrote, "In fact, the higher self-reported acute cannabis was, use was associated with lower odds of motor vehicle crashes." These authors of the study were published in April of 2024, and this was in the... I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the study because I just wrote it down. It was a psychology journal. But to allude to Mr. O'Leary's concerns, in 2022, they did find, the CDC found that 30.7% of 12th graders reported using cannabis in the past year, and 6.3% had said that they had in the last 30 days. This is showing that there's an issue now. Whether this passes or fails or whatever that says, this issue is happening now, and having this facility or voting for it for a use in a 21 and up place that you would have to go to, you buy it, there's a safety lock. This place is harder to get into than Fort Knox. There's like six security guards that are armed, they're outside. You have to go into three rooms to get it. I'm not sure how this makes it any easier for children when it's in their homes. When I talked to several teenagers, and they can get it in less than 30 minutes in the community. This is not the issue that I'm concerned about. But I don't use it. I don't know, it doesn't really matter to me when I know that I just talked tonight and there's a proposed facility on Hoke Road, and there is one at Nemo. I think that the availability of it, whether we do or do not put one in Vandelia, doesn't make a difference. But what I say is, on a controversial issue like this, an entire council should not all vote the same way. And so I think that you should have a representative up here when you look at this council. And so, having a feeling of how this vote will go, whether I'm hanging myself for this or not, I am willing to be that vote for those that would prefer to have it, whether I agree with that or not. That's not saying that I would say that I would want it here. I'm just saying that I don't think on this issue, everyone up here should unanimously vote the same way. And I think that that is important, that we have to recognize that there are people that do want it, and there are, there's a lot of people that don't. But we have to, there has to be someone up here that represents everyone.
All right, thank you. I'd like to ask our police chief to come to the podium and kind of weigh in on this subject.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As several of you have alluded to, I've composed a letter stating my strong opposition for the sale of marijuana in Vandelia. Six and a half years ago, when I became the police chief here, my primary duties and concern is to protect this community and provide for the safety and security of everyone that's in this community. And I don't want to read the entire letter, but I'm going to just talk about a few highlights that I noted in this. I've had various conversations about this with other police leaders. I have spoke about this issue with individuals from other states, particularly Colorado, when I've been at International Association of the Chiefs of Police Conference and dealing with a lot of the issues they've dealt with. I feel like it would be a detriment to our community here. Just to note a couple things. Public safety risks, there's been studies that have consistently shown that marijuana use impairs perception, coordination, and judgment. It significantly increases the risk of accidents and fatalities on roadways. States that have legalized recreational marijuana, such as Colorado, have experienced notable increases in collision claim frequencies and marijuana-related traffic deaths, as well as homelessness and addictions. As mentioned earlier by our school superintendent, the youth and health impacts of particular concern is the impact of marijuana on adolescents and young adult populations. The research indicates that marijuana use during crucial development stages can lead to lasting adverse effects on brain development, including lowered IQ and increased susceptibility to mental health disorders such as depression and schizophrenia. Impaired driving, this is a big concern, and it's one that Ohio is starting to see an increase. If you talk to the State Patrol, Department of Public Safety, the number of crashes that are occurring in our state are on the rise. Marijuana's psychoactive effects can impair cognitive and motor functions critical for safe driving, posing risk to road safety. Addressing impaired driving concerns necessitates continued vigilance and enforcement, public education, prevention efforts to mitigate potential harm. I will give you one example. We had a crash this year at Ranchview and National Road in which an impaired driver on marijuana turned left in front of a motorcycle carrying a male and female, critically injuring the female passenger that struck that, that the vehicle, that was on the motorcycle and struck the vehicle driven by the impaired driver. It's happening currently here in our town already. We train our police officers to protect our residents, our drivers, our motorists, and things like that. And I feel like having facilities in town would simply lend to more common occurrences of that. I realize that the voters in the state of Ohio, and I respect what the voters did, to legalize the use of it on their personal property and their private residence, and that, I think that vote has been heard. But I have serious concerns that if we do allow the legalization of marijuana, there will be more of it throughout our community, and that certainly could impact us. I've spoke with Chief Folick as well. We feel it has a potential, potential for increased police and medical calls for service to address impaired individuals. I feel it could lead to increased impaired drivers on Vandelia's roadways and reduce the productivity and alertness of Vandelia's workforce. And so with that, I would certainly urge council members to consider prohibiting the sale of marijuana in the city of Vandelia.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments from anyone in council?
I had spoken to Chris Wise about his statement that he sent to us, and he was not adverse to my making that public. I'll try to be brief with this. I'm writing you regarding an upcoming decision that the council will be reviewing in regard to the moratorium preventing marijuana dispensaries in Vandelia. I recently had a conversation with Mr. O'Leary, who informed me that he would be speaking at the upcoming council meeting in August. I wanted to share my perspective and concerns as a business owner in the city and a resident of Butler Township, which shares an educational system with the city. I'm pleased that the city took some time to review this topic following the recent passing of recreational marijuana last fall. I'd like to provide my perspective on why I don't believe allowing dispensaries in Vandelia is good for our community. In our work at Projects Unlimited as a defense contractor and an FAA-certified repair station for airplane parts, we are subject to federal guidelines on the use of marijuana. While now legal in the state, it is still illegal to use federally. Since we are bound by FAA and federal guidelines, we are required to test all employees for alcohol and drugs of abuse, including marijuana, at both hire and randomly. Should we find a positive result, we are required to terminate the employee under a no-strikes-allowed federal policy. If we receive a positive test on a new hire, we are not allowed to hire that. If we receive a positive test on a new hire, we are not allowed to hire that individual. As difficult as it is to fill our much-needed job vacancies, it is increasingly difficult to find workers that are able to pass a drug test and then remain drug-free at all times. Adding dispensaries in the city lowers the barriers to obtain marijuana or like products and make it more likely that our talent pool, of which Vandalia is prominent, is significantly diminished. As a business that employs 150 people in the city with a payroll of over $8 million, our inability to find workers hampers our growth and negatively impacts the city through lower tax revenue on our payroll. There is more, but I will keep from reading all of that. If anybody else would like to see the rest of his statement, I'll be glad to forward it to you.
All right, thank you. And to recap, I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Forrest to approve ordinance 24-18 in its first reading. Call the roll.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos Weaver?
No.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries five-one. Next, we have ordinance 24-16 in its second reading.
An ordinance approving a PUD major amendment for Lot 1 of the 40 West Development owned by Mills Barnett Pavilion, Inc. in the Planned Unit Development District.
Thank you. Mr. Swederman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Brody Mays of CrossFit XS seeks approval of a major amendment to the 40 West Planned Unit Development. The proposed amendment would add personal services, a fitness studio, to the list of permitted use for the 40 West PUD.
Thank you. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve ordinance 24-16 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve ordinance 24-16 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Avalos Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next, we have ordinance 24-17.
An ordinance approving a final development plan for Lot 1 of the 40 West Development owned by Mills Barnett Pavilion, Inc. in the Planned Unit Development District.
Thank you, Mr. Swederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Brody Mays of CrossFit XS seeks final plan approval for the development of Lot 1 of the 40 West Planned Unit Development. The proposed final plan would establish a 6,000-square-foot CrossFit studio.
Thank you. And again, since this is in the second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 24-17 in its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Forrest and a second by Vice Mayor Blakesley to approve ordinance 24-17 in its second reading. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. We have no emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions, where you've had a chance to review the civil service meeting minutes of June 24th and July 24th, also the planning commission meetings, meeting minutes of June 25th. Are there any comments? All right, we'll move on to the July 2024 bill listing in the amount of $4,252,818.38, along with the monthly expenses over $25,000, and the purchase card detail in the amount of $24,177. And that brings us to council comments, and we'll begin this evening with Mr. McDonald.
I'm nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Swederman?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Avalos Weaver?
Yes, first I'd like to ask to excuse Councilman Dave Lewis from all meetings.
Second.
Can we vote in acclamation? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries.
And second, I just want to mention fellow city-over Councilwoman Adrian Draper. Right before we came here, several of us knew her very well. She passed away roughly two weeks ago now. She was the youngest, she's from Inglewood, Inglewood City Councilwoman. She was the youngest elected female city councilwoman in Montgomery County. She served with several of us on different boards and things. She was a light, just a very, very special woman. She had just graduated with her MPA in May and had a bright future ahead of her. I know that it was an honor just to see Councilman Folic there. I know that he served with her for a long time, or not a long time, but at least six years, was it, that you were with her or more?
Just shy of three.
Oh, just three or four, okay, I'm sorry. And several of us have known her for a long time, and so she will be deeply missed. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Forrest?
Just want to say thank you to all our citizens and for all their input. We had a few things on this agenda for this meeting that were controversial, I guess, in nature. But it's great when people will take the time to email us or call us or stop us out and give us their opinion, honest opinion on how they feel. And that's our job to represent those people. So I really appreciate that and appreciate Barb, your information. It's great when people will take the time to pass that along. Thank you. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Folic?
Just a few things real quick. First of all, I just want to recognize and thank staff for the Purple Heart City banners that were up the first part of August. That was an addition to our ever-growing banner collection. But I think it was an important addition to the community's banner program, representing our designation as a Purple Heart community. So that was a nice addition to see that early August. Kind of going along with that, and this is something out of the comprehensive plan, is our city, the retrofitting of our city signage throughout town. I'm glad to see that that's starting to come to an end. But I think, you know, it really makes an impact where a lot of our parks have had signage that's 25, 30 years old and rotting and not identical. So by tying all of our city facilities together with our, with our new brand and those signage, and Mr. Clark, I think, left earlier, I saw him during that study session. But I think staff's done a good job seeing that project through. So I'm happy that it's coming to, to the end. And I know some of the bigger signs are, we're waiting on at Hellkey Park and the cemetery and the art park, I think, are the remaining ones. So just welcome to our new employees and promotions for those firefighters that were promoted this evening. And I also wanted to recognize two staff members that were recently promoted in the Parks and Rec Department. Aaron Messenger, who became our facility manager at the Vandalia Recreation Center, and Alicia McCracken, who was promoted from that position to recreation superintendent. Both employees are longtime employees of the city, Vandalia Butler grads. And I think that it just shows that we have a good workforce here that we're able to promote from within and elevate those individuals to new leadership positions in the organization. So congratulations to both of them. And the last thing I have is, and we talked about this in study session when we were going over, when Mr. Swederman was reviewing the financial report. But that's on our cost recovery in three of our areas, the golf course, the recreation center, and the swimming pool. And, you know, that's one thing that over the years, council has spoken, had a lot of discussions about those three areas. You know, those are three very big amenities that this community, for a community this size, to have is just phenomenal. And I think it speaks to our staff's competence and professionalism that those three cost centers are performing at such high levels and not being subsidized by the general fund. And some of that's weather-dependent at times. I mean, we can have a bad summer and the pool tanks. But I think, you know, and we accept that as a council. But I think for us to be able to provide those amenities to our citizens, you know, the golf course performing at 111% cost recovery, the pool being the highest it's been in years, I think that just speaks to our staff and their professionalism and how they run those facilities. So I was glad to see that all three of those are trending up. So thank you to staff. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
I just want to echo the welcome to Leanne and congratulate Derek and Chris on their promotions.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
So many things have already been said, echo all those same sentiments. Also, talk about staff. There's, staff has also been helping with the music in the park, at the art park, actually. And I've had the opportunity to attend two of those concerts, and actually, it's quite a hidden gem. It's phenomenal, and I'm looking forward to the band shell over top of that to help enhance some of that. But certainly, that's quite unintended, under-intended. So I would hope to see more in the future, attend those. Also look forward to our budget workshops. And if there's a sampling of what we saw tonight, that's making me even more anxious to get down to the meat and potatoes of what our job is really about. So I look forward to that, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, and I agree with everything that's been said tonight, so I have no further comments. Meeting is adjourned.